Oh yeah, sorry, give it just a second. Okay. It's not. Okay, okay. Uh, so my name is Paul Segley Ferry. I'm the Chair of the Super North Arizona Board of Appeals. It is September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, past the hour seven P M beginning everyone. Um, this meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format and is being reported. Uh, so first up on the agenda, it's the first item. I just want to introduce Ed the Blank. Uh, comes from Cumberland, Rhode Island zoning board experience was recently appointed uh by a select board. Uh, by a week ago and is our new small. So thanks. Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Alright, so first up on the agenda, uh, is to continue the public hearing, uh, to consider the petition submitted. Submitted by DJF Realty for a special permit pursuant to zoning by law section seven dash oh eight oh two oh. And cyclone approval pursuant to zoning by law section seven oh three oh five oh eight one B law or lawful pre-existing not normal use. And also the modified existing special permit for ground architecture overlay district issued by the zoning board of appeals on September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. And filed with the town clerk on December one, twenty twenty-three pursuant to section. Seven oh seven oh one oh, the app proposes to construct three single-family homes on property located at one twenty-nine Maple Street at fifty-two. Parcel seven, we mean twenty-eight and twenty-nine, the residential C zone district and ground or protection overlay district area two. It's matter comes before the board in accordance with a joint motion to remand filed with the spirit board in June seventeen, twenty-twenty-five. In the case of DJF Realty LLC versus North Arizona Fields, case number two, three, five. C V zero one three seven seven, which concerns the plaintiff's appeal of a decision filed with town clerk on December one, twenty twenty-three. Which denied a special permit, cyclone cruel application for reconstruction five unit family structure on the subject, I think. Alright. John, Dave, how you guys doing tonight?
Good.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so I think kind of picking up where we left off at our last meeting. Um, so just a couple of emails or communications back and forth. So I want to um start with the previous area calculation sheet. Uh, that was submitted. Um, so I think Lori, if you have a couple of comments, uh, I think you guys had a uh.
Yeah, so.
I think there were some typos in the calculations sheet.
Right.
So just hoping that your engineer can redo it. Um, because I I'm not sure where I got the numbers, but the total parcel area is fifty-two thousand seven hundred and two square feet. We don't know if he was referencing something else. But if just to do that, I did also condition um to submit that to Bob.
So I I think the calculation that Lori had done um has an existing coverage of about six thousand, we'll use round number, six thousand square feet. A lot consisting of about fifty-two thousand seven hundred square feet for a total coverage of about eight point seven percent. Uh, the proposed has a coverage of about ten thousand square feet, same lot size, which is nineteen point oh five percent. Which is an increase of ten percent. So it's still below the fifteen percent, but I think that it's just a. Seems like a clerical error. Um, it just, I think we're adding it as a condition.
I can, you know, the process.
Okay. Um, so the next, I think everyone has had a chance to go through for precise copy of the um. Proposals draft. Um, for the the draft decision for for tonight. Um, I think I'd like to start with crucial waivers. Um, so currently there are. Five waiver requests that you guys are are looking for me from. Um, I think you want to kind of, I think we have this letter. Um, John from you dated September sixteen, twenty twenty-five. So I think from a waiver request standpoint, we'll make those decisions when we're with you our deliberations. Um, I guess I'll open it up to you guys. If there's anything else you want to add in addition to your letter in regards to the papers, any other additional information?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, I think I sort of ran through it, I think. Some of the applicability of some of these requirements is. Unclear to me, but just an abundance of caution. Um, we asked for the waivers and if the boards would. Uh, approve them, then I think it just sort of fudges it up. And that didn't speak to any of them. I think a lot of them are um. Sort of self-explanatory. Why we don't really think these requirements add anything. Um, and why a number of the other comments. Um, in the staff memo make total sense to me. And we ask, um, they just be post-approval conditions, which I saw them in the um proposal conditions. I'll just mention, we have no issue with any of them. They have one question is, you know, about one of the conditions, just to understand what we're being asked to do. I think we have a sense of that now. Um. But other than that, I think uh the waivers should be uh. Pretty clear why we're asking one, but I haven't answered your questions.
Okay, um, so I don't have any questions with regards to the waivers. Uh, I'll open up the board. Specifically with regards to waivers requests, um, seeing what had any additional questions um for the applicant. At this time.
Done. Just a little confused, Mr. Chair. Yep. I didn't see the memo of calculations earlier that you were referring to. And but they accept third motion asking for the waiver. From that. I'm missing with two different things.
Which which were.
The third motion to grant a waiver for uh planning more rules regs required to pick the location design of proposed store, proposed store or management. System, which range calculations prepared by the engineer. So you're saying, I mean, I just. Think I heard you said they were under the fifteen percent. Yeah. We're waiving it anyway.
So they were, um, because they're in groundwater protection overlay district, they did have to provide the previous uh calculation sheet. And they are under the fifteen percent um. Despite the review was repeat. And uh, but they did agree to infiltrate the roof runoff. So that was a question that was discussed at the last meeting and um so. There is um a requirement in the engineer that says that they have to do that. So it's. Well, so. There, there are a couple of different things. This is a subdivision, um, um, not subdivision, planning board rules and reg. But the dry wells and infiltrating the roof runoff is a zoning by law. So this is waving that requirement.
Less. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, and then I guess the only other question I have um was. So under the the conditions that are currently laid out in B one through eight. Um, I guess, was there anything that you guys? Thought you want to provide comments for with regards to those conditions? I think if so, there. Were things that you guys had proposed, such as the roof drains and subsurface drywalls? I think so. A lot of, a lot of, some of the. Comments were on Lori's letter that you asked, we're we're fine with conditions. I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, um, I I think we're fine with the conditions. Uh, H was the one I had had a question about. Um, the uh. Uh, requirement to remove the slope within the limits of the right way. Um, because it didn't seem like much of a slope. I understand your point that um. It's really when. Banks get clouded up on there. So to the extent. I mean, our sense was let's disturb as little site as possible. But if the board would prefer that we sort of. Bring the first, I think you said ten feet feet back to street level essentially, uh, I think, uh, we're willing to do that, right?
Yeah.
Um, so that's my understanding of what you intended from that condition. Um, and then. Uh. The walkways, um. I. I mean, I. Concrete or decorative pavers, um. And then we're trying to provide the information about light, um. Limited disturbance. I think most of these we had sort of um already reviewed. So I think they all look. They all.
Okay, um. That's all I really had for for that. Uh, were there any other questions or comments from board? Um, in regards to the vision, is the case for the draft comments? I guess I've got a staff. Was there anything additional that you guys had?
Took a few.
Yep.
My name is the Chair. Um, decision, um, C hours of operation is eight A M to seven P M. Generally, um, the boards in the past have said seven to seven, which is an agreement with what's printed in the zoning bylaws. Now, I don't know if it was some difference given to neighbors to starting an hour late. I just want to make you aware this K A M is kind of a usual start.
Yep. Yeah, I think the given the location of the property, um, fact that it's in the residential zone, I think starting at eight A M, seven P M.
Thanks. Just wanted to bring to your attention. Good. Uh, number two, um, I had a chat with the. Um, H S U S directed today regarding. Septic design, which is fine. There's no problem with that. Um, we both agreed that um that. When it comes time, we're probably going to require a a D restriction for the subject system capacity. Would help us in the future, uh, not so much under current ownership, but whatever goes condos would be a lot easier if I didn't have a D restriction so that you want to finish a basement. Or we're a room, um, we can't exceed the capacity of the installs. These currently don't have a decision, but you do have subject system shelter design installed, of course, standards of regulations.
Do you want me to sentence about a a D restriction?
It's it's a pretty boilerplate, one-shot deal at the registry. It's not expensive, but. It helps, it helps control the growth of the units. Down the road.
And I just, you know.
It's not saying you can't finish the basement. It's just you.
Of course.
You can't make a bed or a basement work.
And just to, you know, explain the ball going off of your eight to seven as well. Currently, the town has a project going on with the fire station. I own the closest residential house to the fire station. Uh, my fire station. Is from the fire station entrance to what the residential house that I own is half the distance. That's from the building I'm ripping down. To the closest residential house on Maple Street. Every single day, those guys are there at eight, uh, six, six thirty in the morning. Every single day, six thirty, and I, my residential house is, like I said, the closest house to the fire station. Never once have I complained. Never once has my tenant complained. Nothing has ever come up of it. So, you know, I agree with Bob a little bit on the, you know, eight to seven that I I mean, I think it should be taken into consideration. Most people in the construction industry start at seven.
I I I just wanted to. Let you know that I just brought it up to their attention.
No, but I, you know.
Agree, disagree. Uh, it's just that the eight o'clock is out of the norm.
Yep. No, and I agree with you. And to be honest with you, it it was, it kind of went past me a little bit on here. I thought it said seven, eight, a little dyslexia kicking in, but. Um, it is what it is, but.
And I guess the only point I made is obviously we're gonna kind of fight over that, but um. So, uh, everything worked. Or it is time, but, you know, obviously it's the board's call.
And that's just site work. So you can work twenty-four hours a day inside those units and nobody cares. It's it's just a site work itself.
Right.
Bob, is there anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay. Um, I guess this is still an open public hearing. Um. Do you want to see if there's anyone, I guess if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak or if there's anyone on the webinar that wants to. Um, who's are going to make any comments, uh, we can take comments at that at this. So I just want to confirm, Brad, if you want to confirm, you've also seen no hands raised.
Yes.
Right, um. I think I don't have any other additional questions or comments at this time. John or Dave, do you guys have any other additional comments? Mr. Chair, okay, board members. So. Steph. Um, so I think at this time, uh, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, let's make motion to both the hearing, probably twenty-nine, Maple Street.
I will sign.
Okay. All those in there? I think nine, right? Great, thank you guys. So just sort of a procedural standpoint, we have, we do have an over case tonight, so we are going to. Hear that case, hopefully get to that case and then celebrate and decide. On the one for that. Thank you. So hopefully we have a decision tonight. Okay. Appreciate it. Yeah. You would. So, uh, next up on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the petition submitted by Paul and Jerry. For variance pursuant to zoning by law section seven oh eight oh three oh for the construction of. An addition of any front yard setback of an existing single-family home on the property located at twenty-nine Rice F F map forty-two parcel one twenty-four. In the residential C zoning district, ground or protection overlay district areas.
Uh, hi. Good evening. My name is Daniel. I'm with David Ross Associates.
Okay.
And representing Paul Cheery tonight for his property on Rice Ave. Um, as you mentioned in the introduction, I give for variance in the front yard offset. Just have a little bit of background, property twenty-nine Rice Ave is in the resident C southern district. Also on the ground law protection, overlay district area three. A lot of wealth contains below thirteen thousand square feet. And has adequate frontage on Rice Ave as well as on Kerry Craig Circle. This is a corner lot. Um, the house was originally built in nineteen fifty-eight, what they're abouts, and um it's currently non-conforming. In regard to the front yard offset. What we're seeking tonight is to um get your approval so that we can put an addition on the rest of the end of the house. And that would create um a bring a non-conformance in the front yard offset to Kerry Craig Circle. Uh, we're looking for relief for fourteen point four feet as the the uh. The addition itself is going to be fifteen point six feet off of the sideline of Kerry Craig. Um, due to circumstances related to shade, non-forming lot. Little interpretation would involve a hardship detailed in the application. But we feel that uh if relief were given, um, it would not be a substantial detriment of good. Along with our application, we did submit. Three letters that were drafted by the three of the neighbors. And just tonight I was handed a mock hand written penalty from the next door neighbor. Um, also endorsing the project and asking. Uh. The board's cooperating with this relief. Yes.
Sure, tonight, yes.
So I guess just to kind of come to the three letters, um. Any readings? Uh, so the first one is from uh Bruce Shirley Lundberg. At thirty-six great sound, uh, in a, are in full score of the project. Um. The next one is from, uh, Will Stanny, uh, about Kerry Craig Circle, um. Is a problem with project. Proven, uh, the finals from Kevin and Laura Halloran. Uh, at thirty-three Rice Ave. Um, in the area in full. And last one is. Even in a. At eight, Kerry Craig Circle, um, and they want to know that they are in full sport on the prime. Okay, sorry.
Thank you for leaving those in. Um, the Lundbergs are actually here with us tonight to just continue their support. Um. So with that, it it is just a matter of the offset Kerry Craig that we're dealing with tonight. We're. Hopefully find approval with the board. So I'll have to go back to you for any questions.
Um. So could you just go over through, uh, what what actually will exist within this construction? It's just a new bedroom or?
Um, yes, actually with us tonight is also Bob Cody from Division Homes. He is the designer. Uh, owner of the home of the addition. And on the first floor, I understand. Uh, he's taking an existing living room space and simply taking the wall out, adding a bigger room. So there's no increase in. Um, when I, if I could set to the screen, would that be helpful? Um, so again, this is the first floor here. Currently, there is a living room in this area here. This wall will be removed to make a much bigger room for their growing family. Um, the second room on the first floor is a office slash game room. T V's in there. Um, so that would be an addition. And then on the second floor, to directly answer your question about bedrooms. On the second floor, we have a primary bedroom in this front corner of the house. And that primary bedroom is going to end up uh being annexed with this master bedroom and a walk-in closet. So the direct answer is no, there is not an increase in beds.
Bob, remind me, the um. This is a corner lots, so it's got two fronts and two backs, is that right?
Uh, so.
Two sides.
Yeah.
Okay. But the side setback is fifteen feet.
That's correct.
Um, Lori, about you guys, any additional comments or questions?
Uh, I do have a question. Um, is this, is there a full basement under the addition?
Good question.
There is. Okay, this is what's not on the plans. Um, it's going to be full access from the existing basement.
Existing basement is there. It will be on the construction plan sheet.
Okay. Um, is there a garage proposed to go under? You know, the now the basement area, so it's going to be solid base. Thank you. That's all.
Through the gym.
Uh, yeah.
Um, I understand, yeah. Why you want to put it on the side, but I can't just put it in the back where you get, whatever. But uh, right behind the house, the existing second tank and the leach field. Those are also shown and a little bit lighter. It may not go up terribly clear. It also has to flow of the house. We've got a master bedroom on that end and wanting to make some states in there with the master bathroom. Currently, I believe it says the one bathroom, right? I'm sorry, one bathroom. Oh, we power play. And I got another question with you.
Sure.
Um, on your. Uh, sketches, um, the left elevation shows a blank wall, but the back elevation shows a stairway coming off there. On the second floor, which what's it going to be? Which one?
The stairway is a temporary stairway. During construction to access the second floor, so disturbing. Um, that will be taken out and moved when you finish.
Thank you.
Name and also the board have any additional questions?
Mr. Chair. Yeah, the existing shed on the the site plan here, that, is there a variance for that? Is there a fifteen foot setback side?
I need for an assessment structure to be outside.
accessory, okay. I think that was taken down, but the one in the back.
I know.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. I knew it was the shed like. A year ago, okay. It used to be on. The other question I had was basically the same question. Jack had.
Still the question. Um.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so you, you're on the plans, you say relocating the electric service of the heat pump, are you just pushing those out? Are they still going to be on the side of the house or where are those going to be relocated?
He's got an overhead service right now that connects the existing corner. So we're just going to swing that to the new corner, which he said.
Okay.
And the heat group is presently on that side of the house, it can remain on that side.
Uh, so this is a public hearing. Um, if there is anyone in the audience here or online, um, if you are on the webex. If you could just please raise your hand, um, we can hopefully call on you. You know, um, is there anyone here that would like to? Yeah. Good, right, just to confirm, there are no hands raised on the webex.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Um, I don't have any further. Comments or questions. Um. Tom, Steph, is there going to be any additional?
More fiction, yeah, I had a question. Sure, Bob. So right now, uh, like the app you mentioned, it's already reached this number form. It's already. Twenty-five point six one part of the house, a lot. And now it's going to be fifteen feet. So do we grant it if we do decide to grant, which, you know. Is what it is. Um, are we asking to relieve from twenty-five feet down to the fifteen or from the thirty? It is from the thirty, okay, okay.
All right, um, if there's no other further questions or comments. From the app, do you guys have anything additional to add?
Nothing.
Yes, Charlotte, make a motion to oppose the very twenty-nine Rice Ave.
Uh, soon as you second, we have a motion to close, all those we favor. I, I.
Thank you so much. Okay, thank you. Um, just for the matter of. Yeah, understanding the process, yet playing it standard, uh, petition, if it is positive, would be drawn up shortly, signed and filed with the town clerk.
Yeah, so hopefully we'll have a. Yeah, so hopefully we'll have a decision tonight. Um. Decide within the next day or so, and then, uh, I still think you need to wait twenty days.
Yes.
Um, for any appeals from neighbors.
The only reason I brought it up is I do that every time, um, I'm presenting something at this time of the year. All of the construction schedules are even on weather, so we just wanted to know the timeframe. So thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
You, I'm sorry. You can, if you want. Apply for the building permit. Okay, okay. We can get the review process started, okay? If everything works out, I can hold it until the twenty-day period is up and when that time comes and just push the button.
So thank you very much.
That was great.
All right, have a good night. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you.
What's that?
You can say if you want.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for coming.
One, the other one. So just to kind of go through what we're actually talking about in sections here, so there's. five waivers at the applicant, partially that's within our, um, per making a decision of, um. The first one is a waiver from planning board rules, uh, for submitting a location plan, and it shows location used buildings with three feet. Second one's granted waiver for vision triangles measured in feet multiple driveway egresses. Uh, expecting compliance with the standards, third one is granted waiver from planning board rules and regs through part of different location design, the proposed storm management system, next one to waiver for partially for the, uh, showing direction of those lighting, and then the last one is granted waiver for section seven, seven-two D for the development impact analysis. Um, I think some of these waivers, um. Are probably not applicable here, uh, development impact analysis, uh, three simple factors, if it makes sense in my opinion, so I'm granting, obviously that waiver, um. Does anyone have any thoughts on the other waivers in terms of, I feel like some of them are granting waivers, but then we're also requiring roof draw up and drywalls and that sort of thing. So kind of doing waivers requesting, which I think we've already confirmed with town council is fine, um, in terms of getting the end result that they were looking for. Um. So. I don't, does anyone have any thoughts on specifically just maybe request for it?
I think that's, I think that's everything we talked about previously, I think we were all in agreement when it's each one at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, so I think we were on the go.
Okay, um, and I, I think, um. But so I think in terms of the conditions, um, so we did meet with town council to go through, so obviously site plan. Gives us flexibility in terms of, um, applying conditions that we feel, sort of including some of the traffic and safety. Um, for pedestrians, the vehicles, um, I had a condition, condition each, that sort of reduces some of the slope at Omaha to be able for anyone else walked down that street during the winter. Uh, for running free. Um, corner of roadways in the winter does get built up with snow. Um, there's sort of a slope of about forty-five feet. Um, so yeah, it's fine with it, it's a condition that is well within our rights to do, so. That was my thought behind that, is from condition. So all the other ones, I think are conditions that, um, you know, Lori suggested in terms of the uh, the walkways, the lighting, um. Kind of association, that's right. Um, we're discussing those last meeting.
And if you're going to add the restrictions.
So I'm going to add that um, to the condition sheet, yeah.
But you sure? Is the applicant, uh, okay with the site triangles? In theory, here, so we're talking on Maple Street, we're talking about having a site triangle just on Maple or is it all on the three streets?
So he's asking to waive all three. Um, if you only want to grant partial waiver. And that's fine too, I can modify the decision.
So you just had a long street, leaving house and space and.
If that's what you want. If I, I would add that. Letter B, so I would have a number nine. To put the vision triangle, you want the vision tria- a triangle on Maple Street?
Is that your? Yeah, that was what I was referring to. We'll vote on that too, though, right? Is that something that we should vote on? Divinely, or is that? Or any conditions? Um, yeah, we can. Um, does that require the waiver, this is one of those, if you could still grant the waiver and then add a condition?
What I would do is, uh, say you're going to grant partial waiver.
Okay.
And then add that the vision triangle shall be provided for uh, the Maple three egress.
That'll be as. Uh, was there anything else that anyone had any comments or feedback on? Ed, feel free if you want, have any questions or anything?
Of all kinds of. Sorry, like that.
Um, okay, so I think what we can do, does anyone else have any other? I think I've been able to go in with this. Um, so I think what we can do is, um, we'll just do the motion for the waivers one by one. Um, just to make it as clean and simple as possible, um, and then we will do each one motion for. Yeah.
All right, Mr. Chair, uh, I'd like to make a motion to grant a waiver from planning board rules and regulations, section seven point two C four requirement to submit a notice plan at one equal um, one inch equals on feet, that shows the location of used buildings with three hundred feet of the boundary of the project site in driveways utilities within two hundred feet of the project site.
I second.
Okay, so, uh, it's a motion to grant the waiver for the playing more rules and regulations, section seven two, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant a waiver from planning board rules and regulations, section seven point two C ten, requirement to include division triangles measured in feet. From all, from all proposed driveway egresses depicting plants with applicable standards. The American Association of State Highway Transportation Efficiency, uh, A A S H T O. Partial waiver, granted partial waiver.
And then, uh, maybe just specify that the vision triangle will be provided on Maple Street.
And with the amendments that vision triangle, uh, will be, uh, included on the Maple Street egress.
I second.
Yeah, uh, spread the motion for partial waiver, Suzie seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant a waiver from planning board rules and regulations, section seven two, C eleven and seventeen, requirement to depict the location sign of the proposed storm water management system with three inch regulations prepared by a registered civil engineer.
Second.
Grabbing the motion, uh, for the, uh, grant the waiver, Suzie seconded, all those in favor? I have.
Aye. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant a waiver for planning board rules and regulations, section seven point two C eighteen. Partial waiver granted from the requirement to show the direction of or proposed lighting.
I second.
Grabbing the motion to, for the lighting, and Suzie seconded, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant a waiver from planning board rules and regulations, section seven point two D one, requirement to submit the development impact analysis.
I second.
Okay, um, all those in favor for the motion?
Aye.
Aye. All right, last one, so last one is the, uh, special permitting, set plan approval, enter the event, the existing.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant a special permit pursuant to zoning by law, section seven dash zero eight dash zero two zero to alter and a lawful, the existing non-conforming use can cite plan approval pursuant to zone by law, section seven dash zero three dash zero five zero A one A. And amend an existing special permit for groundwater protection overlay district issued by zoning board appeals on November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. And filed with the town part on December first, two thousand twenty-three pursuant to section seven dash zero seven dash zero one zero D three B one and two for construction of a three single family owns. Uh, the property located at one twenty-nine Maple Street, subject to findings of fact, one dash one through sixteen in conditions A through M.
I second, that was great. Grant.
All right, so grab the motion, uh, for the three special, the special from the site plan and in the venue and the ground order, uh, Suzie seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you. So moving on, twenty-nine RICE Act, um, twenty-nine RICE Act is mental barriers, uh, looking for fifteen point six feet of relief. Um, corner lots, we've put between.
No, it's fourteen, if they're asking, oh, it's fourteen point six and the decision is fifteen feet, no, it's like a round up.
So looking for fifteen feet of relief, um, from the corner lot side setback, um, you know. Living with that corner lots in the past, they are tricky, right, with two fronts, the front being thirty feet, something, uh. Uh, from the street level, um. I think in my opinion, you know, this is a, a fairly small lot, there's literally not a lot of options for, for them to expand the house. Um, I don't really see a problem with anything.
Yep, especially with the, uh, letters from the butters, no issues from the neighbors at all. I mean, I think it's standard. As far as homes in that neighborhood making additions, I mean, it reminds me a lot of the North Gate neighborhood, there's a lot of additions going on and things like that, so.
Um, he has a subject, each building in the backyard, and he has the garage on the other side, so there's no other choice, I'm ready for an addition, I'm going to see my, ah. So, um, I agree.
Yeah, just say, you know, it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's tight there on that lot, um, but, you know, again, with the, I think the neighbors, uh, strong support. The face. Four block. Twenty-three seventy-nine. Sounds good. All right. Um.
Oh, sorry, through the gym, Ed?
Oh, sorry, Ed, yes. Good. It looks like a well maintained home, it's just consistent with weather. The outside, you know, it's just like they're beginning. Yeah. Good.
Inside is pretty nice too.
There you go.
I'll get in there.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to motion, uh, make a motion to grant a variance to allow an approachment of fifteen feet into the thirty foot front yard setback for the construction of an addition to an existing single family home for North Borough zoning by law, section seven dash zero six dash zero two zero. Table of density and dimension regulations on the property located at twenty-nine RICE Act.
Second.
Yeah, grab the motion to approve the variance, seconded by Suzie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thanks, Senator.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Good night.
Who's second, is that something?
Suzie.
My, John.
Um. Yeah, so I think, uh, just before we move on real quick, um, I just want to say, uh, I just wanted to say thank you to town staff. Um, with regards to one twenty-nine Maple Street, um, this has been a case that has been sort of in the, um, on our docket for a couple of years now, uh, so I just want to say publicly, thank you, Lori and Bob. And John Lepin, who is our town council representative, um, for all your guys' work over the last several years, three years, uh, few years. Yeah, I still want to uh, commend the, um, board, uh, for having an open mind throughout the negotiations and discussions. Um, I don't think this, this was an easy case, um, but I do think that, you know, I think we showed uh, willingness to work with the applicant, um, for the betterment of the town and the betterment of the neighbor. And so I appreciate, um, all the work that you guys put in over the last several months and years, um, I think it's, it's in a better place than certainly helping move forward. So. Want to say that real quick?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I agree, I mean, it's, I think we came to a big compromise, so, uh, I think, yeah, I think it's a win-win and yeah, it's been a long, arduous process.
Yeah.
To say the least, so.
Um.
It's coming, you said it's coming down on the twenty-nine?
Thank you.
Yeah. The, the permit's been pulled for done on the twenty-nine?
Um, he had six months to act on it, under the, um, building code, didn't he? Um, I think he wants to go as soon as he can, but I think he wanted to wait till uh, the appeals period is over, just in case, and I'm not exactly sure when, what day he's going to start, but um, there's a requirement that he notifies us. So we can notify dispatch in front of offices and people who need to help. At least twenty-four hours before he starts the demo. Just so when our phones ring off, the book, we can at least, and public answer. So he's also.
Yeah, yeah, so who's going to communicate with that neighbor, it's got some health challenges?
Um, there was a rash of, um. Emails that came through from the neighbor. And we all, I wrote a big long
Yes.
and some asbestos removal report. You know, basically explain that there's only, there's only so many things I can do to require it to happen, there are other things, chess weapons, I have a jurisdiction. And it's a very gray area in terms of actually, because, so, um. I know that, um, yeah, David, he has the contact information, and probably give, you know, people a chance to, you know, a, 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 two heads up.
Yeah.
I mean. Not for nothing, it's probably going to take two or three days, it'll be done and completed up, and just open your windows, you know, it's
Yeah.
It's not a lot.
Yeah, there's no asbestos inside, as you said.
No, the asbestos survey is done, that's the number one thing that I required, actually, to the link of
Yeah.
It needs to be done before we look at, uh, any kind of demolition. We also want to, historical commission, this building is over a hundred years old. Sail through pretty easily, uh, so all of the checks and balances to get to the point where they have issued demo permit. It's all done.
Yeah. Okay. Um. Do you want to do this June twenty-four?
Yeah, I can, I can explain. Yeah, uh, so you folks make it tall, uh, then July, you approved it for minutes for June twenty-four, and we received um, an email from, uh, the realtor, who was representing the applicant, uh, Judy Boyle. And she had the issue with the language in the approval minutes. So she asked, uh, to reconsider the language in the minutes, there was one, uh, kind of paragraph that she, well, one sentence she has an issue, had an issue with, she suggested some alternative language. I went back and reviewed the tape, uh, to see what was actually said. And then I provided you folks with my suggestions, the verbiage is a little bit different than what she had wanted. Um, but it is in red. And underlined, so uh, the, the original sentence was, Ms. Boyle confirmed the designation of the building. And I would agree, uh, after reviewing the tape, that she did not confirm, she actually disputed. And then she wanted some additional narrative about what Bob had said. And, um, so that's reflected here in the revised minutes. So if you are on board with the language, if you could just rescind your original approval of the minutes. And then, uh, if you're okay with this language, approve then that's amended.
Is that through two separate motions?
Two separate motions, yeah.
Okay. Um, does everyone have a copy of the, the changes that Lori had laid out? Um, does everyone have a copy of the, the changes that Laurie had laid out? Alright, um, so this someone wanna make a motion to win. Uh, to make a motion to, um, rescind the approval of the ZBA minutes from June twenty four, twenty twenty five?
So moved.
Second.
Can I ask a question before we do that? Is it like a lot of work to rescind them? Like, we've never had anybody request that they would rescind the case cast? Yeah.
Yeah, um, it's, it's, it's as, it's as simple as just rescinding the vote and decoding that. So, it, it's up to you folks when you want to do that, um, but it, it is.
So it's like not extra work for staff or anything?
No, the only thing is, um, of course, we'll have to resend the minutes to the town book. And, uh, I had a conversation with her about the fact that, yes, I know they weren't previously approved, but now. Uh, you know, for little background information, now I need you to rescind them again. So she'll put a new date stamp on them to reflect. Probably to my whole team.
Yeah, um, I don't think it's anything that the board had said, I think this is reflecting something that somebody in the audience had said. Um, secondly, as I've said previously, I think our minutes are too long, minutes are supposed to be minutes, not book. I think we get too in-depth on the minutes, just wanna throw that out there once again.
Okay.
So there's a motion.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, like, that it wasn't giving the town staff, like, too much and. Making the point that the case went the way that they wanted, so I think it's still the. A little bit, but if it's not making too much, too much work on any staff member, then.
I've already done the listening.
Okay, okay, alright, because it was just a strange request. Okay. Yeah, because it doesn't have any bearing on the case, but, alright, I'll sign, I'll sign it if it's.
Alright, uh, so there was a motion made to rescind the approval of the ZBA minutes from June twenty four, twenty twenty five, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, yeah.
Is there a? Is, is there a motion to, um, approve the updated minutes as of?
Um, so what else have you seen?
Is there a? Motion to approve the minutes for June twenty four, twenty twenty five, which changes reflected as of September twenty third, twenty twenty five? So moved. So moved.
I second.
Second, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, consideration for the ZBA minutes from August twenty sixth, twenty five?
So. The, uh, email that Laurie sent, she goes twenty seven.
So, is that the twenty seven? Let's see.
Oh, the email itself says the twenty seven, but the actual date, the date is the twenty six.
Sorry.
Does everyone have a chance to read the minutes? By patients? Anyone have any comments or questions with the rest of this?
So Sharon, I'd like to approve, uh, zoning board appeals, uh, minutes for August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five meeting, yes.
Uh, spread and movement, seconded by Suzie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Um, our next CBA meeting is October twenty eighth, uh, do you have any cases?
Not as of yet, I am expecting a filing. Um, but I'm not sure whether it's gonna, it's a wrap.
Yeah.
So it might be in October, or it could be in, okay.
Okay, uh, so right now, we don't know if we're gonna have an October meeting or a November meeting, um. Any other business that we, we, we come before the board, but I think, one thing I'll just bring up quickly, um. I don't know if anyone has been, uh, following sort of the White Cliffs. Um. Storyline, um, that's been going over in town, I think I have a chance to see if the White Cliffs was actually kind of interesting, um. But I think the expectation is that at some point over the next several months, um. You know, the White Cliffs case is gonna come before the zoning appeal, so very high level to sort of. Get everyone on, on the same page. The select board has been negotiating with the elegant banquet on the lease deal, right, for, um, for them to sort of lease the property, fix it up. Run sort of their weddings and, um, events business there, um. It will require, we believe, a zoning change with the planning board has been also be with concurrently. Um, where, so just to kind of back up some there, the White Cliffs property, right, certainly has like this candy cane sort of shape. Where the first hundred feet closest to the road is Business East. And then back property is residential, so it's kind of split zone. So the planning board is currently discussing sort of one of two options, here. Uh, potential for an overlay on that property or rezoning the entire property to be business. So they discussed it at their last meeting, um, it is something that will need to be brought on a town meeting, which is November thirty, third, third. November the third, so November the third, town meeting will basically be. A vote to approve the select boards, we sit here with the elegant banquet, and then the addition will be the zoning article is up, whatever the planning decides. That point is when the elegant banquet will go through the site process, you know, uh, do all that. Engineering and everything else, and then. Thought is because what they're putting in is a restaurant with serving alcohol, so we require a special permit, and then I'll have.
Little bit of a change there, um, so it all depends on, I don't know, what the planning board decides to go with. So under the Business East scenario, um, the jurisdiction is with the ZBA. So that's a special permit by the ZBA. Under the overlay scenario, so, um, Amy Brett, the chair of the, um, planning board, put together an overlay. It hasn't been discussed with anybody yet, plan board, uh, just received an email with it. Um, I, if, I probably will recommend some changes. The way it's currently written is it doesn't designate who the special permit, uh, approval of her is, it doesn't say plan board, it doesn't say ZBA. So, that's something that needs to be worked out, um, so certainly, the public hearing. So I threw together a public hearing notice, um, and I had. Just enough time for that public hearing notice to hit today's telegram and gazette. Um, so the public hearing for that is gonna be at our next meeting, um, just, sixteen, seventeen. So that may be.
Six, seven.
Sixteen?
The seven.
Six.
So that may be, um, a meeting that you folks would be interested in attending. Uh, like I said, it's a public hearing, the public hearing on the Business East rezoning was continuing to that night as well. A decision has to be made that night, as, um, the select board has to post the warrant. And, uh, that has to be done by October ninth, so. There's, uh, no other time to talk about it, it has to be finalized. Or kick to another town meeting should also a possibility, but certainly elegant banquet wants the zoning issue resolved.
Uh. Yeah, Jacob, I think you see every hand raised?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Jacob, how you doing?
Great, thanks everyone for what you're doing, just letting you know I'm here and. Thank you Laurie for explaining that all, thank you Paul for your explanation, everything is on point, um. The only thing that I wanted to just note that in the event that, uh, it does turn into a special permit in front of you all. Um, which I, if I were, well, I don't wanna guess, but I think it's highly likely, in my opinion, but, um, if you could all. Be prepared for scheduling that as reasonably quickly as obviously the applicant's gonna need to put together their papers and everything, but. I just know from listening to them that they are going to be very anxious to getting underway with their project as, as early as possible, so that, that's all, um. Just if you could, uh, if that does come across you all, if you could schedule it as promptly as you could, that'd be great.
Good, thank you, Jacob, yeah, and I think like, uh, it is important to also, um. You know, I, I think listening to the select board meeting the other night, which was a public hearing basically on White Cliffs. Yeah. Like, the feel for concerns from townspeople, right, there's some people that are concerned about like the financial, um. You know, the leasing agreement, that sort of thing, and then there's obviously the people, the neighbors and stuff like that, and I think it's, you know, there's different wars or. Play the role of different things, right, and like, um, you know, people that are concerned about like the town people putting money into White Cliffs and not having financial exposure to that. Right, there, that's a select board leasing agreement sort of issue, right, how much are this town getting for it, what's the property taxes on, right? But I think in terms of, you know, our role, when we go through the business perspective, is knowing and communicating to people, right? What role the zoning board plays in that, right, and it would be a special permit, uh, it would be a site site review, right? And then there are conditions and criteria, right, that we as a board could potentially use, um, to sort of. Uh, blanket or, um, allows some of the fears that residents may have with regards to. Bounds of operation, right, both sort of, uh, pedestrian safety and traffic and, you know. The, the barriers between sort of the facility and the neighbors that are butters, um, you know, those sorts of things, and where each. Board sort of, what role each board plays, so I think it's important that we as a board know. All the different things that we are capable of, um, conditioning, having criteria for it's laid out in our, um. In our, uh, zoning handbook, uh, but just so that everyone knows, since things can get, as you guys know from the previous town meetings, very sort of, uh. Uh. Off contentious, contentious more just like, you know, people don't really know who's responsible. Right, there are questions about, you know, what sort of fencing is gonna be. Uh, which is not a thing that's like what you're thinking, right, they're focused on. What sort of tip agreement or what sort of lease agreement they're gonna do, buybacks, all that stuff, I mean, that's not their burden. Whereas the planning board is on appeals, right, we're the ones that are sort of going to be responsible for, potentially, that's. So just sort of wanna make sure everyone's thinking about that, if there are sort of any questions that anyone has, um, that we're sort of. Moving down that path, with that, I think Suzie, you had sent out a, uh, a training session, right, for the CP.
Oh. I did.
Um.
Like a pumpkin thing?
It was, uh.
Wait, send you guys my pumpkin then, yes?
So, I guess. What I would say is there are training sessions available through the central mass planning.
Yeah, uh, citizen planner training, collaborative, they're very good, and, um. They are aimed at, uh, volunteers, so they're not too technically. Advanced where there's all this legalism that's impossible to understand. So, anybody who's interested in attending any of those seminars, the town will pay for that.
Okay, locked down.
So, um, just let us know, uh, what you're interested in attending, and we'll get you signed up, and. Uh, remember if, uh, we have to reimburse you or whether we pay to do this.
The charities would take care of that, like to the balance sheet too.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, so I think, uh, it might maybe just recirculate the dates of those, but I think that there's. One special permits and various, stuff like that.
Yes.
I, I would say.
Like September seventeenth, um, I, there was one, an email came out, yeah.
Oh, the email on seventeen? But, um, I've attended a couple of these, um, you know, they're pretty, if you've been on the zoning boards and stuff, it's all pretty basic, but. Uh, I do find that it is good if you are farming questions, um, I know in the past, there's been like. I've honestly since I've been hypothetically speaking, just kind of. Give the case that was questioned, right?
Yeah.
Type of thing, so.
Mention the case, but.
If, say, you have an applicant that, whatever, um, because it's usually run by orders and. If people are in sort of the land use business, it's not like a. Uh, yeah, that's all I have. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Yeah, Suzie.
Um, October twenty fourth, I have, um, a pumpkin event for Jennifer and Stroll, Town Common. So Laurie will be happy to know, we're leaving the Town Common again for Community Fairs Committee. So Carver Pumpkin, I'll be, um, circulating that event from four to five thirty. They have different age brackets, so you can, um, win a prize, Bob, like a free pumpkin from you, part. Um, and then. You can just drop it off, I can pick up your pumpkin, um, I just, I got an email today, we're gonna be having a band from School of Rockcom. We plan sweet tea tunes, um, and we're gonna have donuts, um, tattoos not, not permanent, but, um, it's kept things there and. Just a fun community event for, I know you love when we use the comments, so. Um, and then, um, and I'm sure you heard, we're trying, we're getting businesses, there's a sign up for the, um, the, um, bureau. Um, the jet, the trick or treating and the businesses, so for the economic development. So Community Fairs is helping out with that, to try to get people into new businesses, and then when they get ten businesses, um, trick or treating. You'll win a prize, you can, or you can be entered to win a prize, so we're working on that as well, so. Kind of gearing up for the holiday season, people getting into, um, businesses and seeing, you know, new places, so very exciting stuff, but. I'll be posting that on our website, but, and Facebook page and all that, that's what I'm thinking as well.
Sure.
Um, great news, Ecode has finally. Completed putting our two thousand twenty-four amendments into the online version of the zoning bylaw. So, uh, Abby is working on, doing the formatting so that we can print new books finally. And then, uh, this week, we received word from the Attorney General's office. Uh, they approved all of our two thousand twenty-five bylaws, except they struck one sentence from our new accessory jointly bylaw, I think to do. Um, there was a sentence that said that you had to have a separate sewer and water connection service. And they said, no, you can't do that, they approved the rest of the language in that bullet, but not that first sentence, so. Thankfully, we're finally getting there, so we can, uh, give you a new book soon.
So, it's soon be a month or two months, you think, or?
Um, she, she's been working on, uh, the formatting for a while, so I imagine we'll send it out to the printer. Uh, probably within the next, uh, week or so, and then it's just waiting on the turnaround. So we will only have like twenty-five books made, because we'll have yet another version for next year, uh, so.
Well, I will need an orange covered book, I can just leave.
Okay, and we can also print it out for you for the online version?
I have it online.
Oh, okay.
Uh, good, I just.
Okay, alright.
The next cover won't be hard either.
Yeah.
Blue or green or yellow or red or whatever, they change it all the time.
Yeah, I, I always like to see what the most long ago color was that was used in that smoking.
Uh, and then I think, fun of, I just mentioned, I know in the past, the past, we've always sort of had a joint meeting, planning board. Probably usually after the new year, to discuss like. Um, you know, their amendments or changes, planning, things that we're seeing in our code, so. I would just keep that in back room, we can talk to Amy about. Potentially having, uh, hopefully impressive, easier, uh, in those cases, but, um, something we've always done as a board. So, usually the January, February timeframe.
Oh, and for White Cliffs, if anyone couldn't eat the tour, stuff dinner. Oh, and for White Cliffs, if anyone couldn't eat the tour, Steph did a great video that I thought highlighted the inside of White Cliffs. Um, which I thought was like very up to date compared to the pictures that I saw from the tour before. But I, I I love the tour, I thought it was great and kind of gave a real sense of what the interior. Looked like and everything, so she did put that together with, uh, several people. Anyone wanted to find it and see it. Which I think will be helpful, especially if it's coming to us.
It's there on Friday, there's a lot of wide-eyed people. You know, both in terms of the condition of the stuff that's being taken down. The overall condition, building. There's a lot of eye opening, things going on.
I couldn't even chat about getting people surrounding them. Asking them.
Not running for mayor.
Anyone else? No? All right.
Thanks for motion to post meeting.
Good.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye. Thank you.
Pretty soon.
All right.
Well, that's pretty easy, man. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Pat.
Yeah.
Much love him.
Thank you.